Everybody, please rise. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justiciable. Thank you. May be seated. Little clerk, please, call the roll.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Melanazo?
Here.
Counselor Nun?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Counselor Cirillo?
Here.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
Your court memorial?
Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Just want to offer a moment of silence for Worcester firefighter Christopher Roy, who passed away this week, just to remember all the dangers that our first responders go through. And also to remember everyone who has passed away in the city since our last meeting.
Thank you very much for that. It's appropriate. Counselor Melanazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak on a point of personal privilege and to simply take a moment to thank all of my colleagues on behalf of myself and my family, and the city council, obviously the city manager Dunnehugh, and members of her administration, and other elected and appointed officials for their wonderful thoughts and prayers over the passing of my mother, Mary Melanazo. In addition to many elected officials on hand, as an honor guard, the police honor guard, an escort, and Lowell High School ROTC all played a truly important and really dignified role during her funeral mass at the American Conception. So, again, on behalf of my entire family, I want to thank you all for your outpouring of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Please back in the chambers. Thank you. First, on the mayor's business, we had the second annual mayor's holiday festival to raise funds for the homeless, I mean homeless youth. And we were quite successful. John Gier is here. John, do you want to come up and give us a little discussion about this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report on a very successful event, the Second Annual Mayor's Holiday Fest for Homeless Youth. We had this event on November 27th at the Zorba Music Hall. And I'm pleased to say, based on information available now, we raised nearly $15,000 or more for homeless youth in the city of Lowell. Mr. Kennedy, this surpasses your stint as mayor, and I'm sure you're happy to see that. And I know that you and Mayor Samaras had a little competition as to how much money was going to be raised. Big thanks to many sponsors and many individuals who attended the event, contributed funds, and also a lot of thanks to the volunteer group, the planning committee, that put this together to make it happen. I think everybody had a great time. We raised money for a good cause. Thanks as well to the Zorba Music Hall. Community teamwork was our fiscal agent, and they will use the funds to help homeless youth throughout the city. So, a great event. We hope to do it next year. And echoing what you said, Mr. Mayor, Lowell is a very generous city, and they showed it for the Mayor's Holiday Fest for Homeless Youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. No. There's no, we really have to thank the committee for putting this together, the bands. And yes, Counselor Kennedy did, we'll say, throw out a challenge, and it was a good challenge. But I have to credit Counselor Kennedy for establishing the committee that did a lot of the work, the Omen's work, to get this started. But if we look at it, it's $15,525 at this point, but with all the checks come in, it should be $18,275. Lowell is truly a generous place, and it's for the right reasons for homeless youth. And I want to thank everybody for this. Mr. Kennedy, you could...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to commend you for surpassing last year's total this year. I think that's a great job, but I also want to point out that you're not off the hook. You have next year when there'll be the third annual, and I'm expecting that you'll surpass your total next year.
He doesn't quit, I'll tell you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. All right. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Counselor Mercy and I had filed a motion on youth homeless. I mean, these funds go to CTI, correct? Both her and I, and Counselor Nun, we, members of the board. And we just, last Wednesday, there was a discussion about this very subject. And I'd like to come in to explain exactly what they're doing and to dispel some rumors about a shelter that's not taking, that's not going up on Dutton Street. So, I'm not sure if we can do that before the end of the year, but it sort of coincides with this success and what the money will be used for and what they're doing.
We'll try and have that on next week, Counselor. We've met with CTI and other providers, and so, but we will have a report for next week.
Oh, yeah. The executive director did report that she had met with you, so...
Yeah, we had, you know, good meetings over all that they're doing, so we'll get that before the end of the year.
Okay, thanks.
No, it's a good idea, Counselor, and we'll carry that through because it's the appropriate subject and should be done right. Thank you, both of you. All right, next, I'd like to have a motion taken out of order. Counselor Kennedy?
Are we going to do the minutes first?
We might as, why don't we stay with the mayor's business on this one?
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we suspend the rules by general consent in order to take items 5.2 and 9.2 out of order, and then following that, that we also take items 8.1 and 10.6 out of order. And those are, each of those are companions to each other. So, 5.2 and 9.2 first, and then 8.1 and 10.6.
Second, by?
Seconded.
Counselor Nun, thank you. Motion passes. All right, 5.2 is a vote to authorize the city manager to accept a gift from Miko H. Revocable Trust of a Bronze Indian Maiden sculpture. And we have with us tonight Terry O'Connor, who can speak on that matter. Ms. O'Connor?
Good evening. Mayor William Samaras, Madam City Manager Eileen Dunnehugh, distinguished members of the city council. Art is the handmade of human good. As a Lowellian and promoter of the arts, I'm very proud of this slogan. My name is Terry O'Connor. I was born in Lowell and have been a community volunteer for over 35 years. I've assisted many local nonprofits in raising money, but my love and passion is in the arts. I believe art builds character and creativity, helps us appreciate others' creativity, acts as a tool in education and the preservation of history. It connects us to our emotions. Art is the fundamental building block to an enriched life. Fifteen years ago, I had the opportunity and the honor to meet internationally known metalist, artist, and sculptor, Miko Kaufman. I personally worked with Miko and the late Telemachus Demoulis in locating and installing the James McNeill Whistler sculpture at our own Whistler House Museum of Art on Worthing Street. As I got to know Miko, I discovered that he felt very much as I did. He wanted his work to inspire everyone, but especially the young people. He resided and worked in his garage studio in Tewksbury for over 60 years. His sole mission was to create art where none existed. As a result, Lowell and Tewksbury have been the proud recipients of the bulk of his sculptures, not to mention pieces in Greece, France, and England. His miniatures and medals span five continents. In the U.S., he displays at the Smithsonian, Symphony Hall, and a marathon runner in Hopkinton. Among his other accomplishments, he is, he is the designer of the National Medal of Technology, given by the President of the United States every year. He is well-known for his presidential medals. I am here tonight representing the Miko Kaufman Revocable Trust and trustee Elsie Howell. The Indian maiden is a beauty, and designing her, Miko, paid great attention to every detail, from her headband, her belt, and the fringe on her dress. As a Holocaust survivor, Miko had a deep respect and compassion for the Native Americans, the hardships they endured, and the many contributions they have made to our country. Excuse me, I have a cold, so I get a little hoarse. He learned all he could about them with the help of his partner, Elsie Howell, who for many years worked as a nurse on Indian reservations. Miko carefully researched all his subjects before he created them. The maiden represents an ordinary Native American female. She is not from any particular tribe, but someone who is revered in her culture for her strength and wisdom. Working on this project, I learned that the woman in the Native American culture, excuse me, especially the elderly women are the ones that make all the decisions for the family. Family members defer to her for guidance. She is truly the matriarch. This sculpture has the maiden performing a healing ritual, kneeling before a bonfire. Feather in hand, she directs the smoke to the heavens in deep prayer to the gods. Miko sadly passed away in 2016 at the age of 93. As you can see in the presentation folders, I have prepared for you to review, the journey of the maiden has been ongoing for over 20 years. Not for lacking in effort, the project, for many different reasons, was never completed. Tonight, I would like to inform you that Miko's partner, Elsie Howell, would like to donate the Indian maiden to the city of Lowell, on condition that she is placed, as Miko wished, near the Pawtucket Falls in honor of the Pawtucket Native Americans in Lowell. I hope you will give considerable thought to this generous offer, so that we can add her to our existing list of Miko sculptures in Lowell. The Rus Memorial next door, homage to women on Market Street, De Bussi at the university, and James McNeill Whistler at the museum. What makes one city stand out from another? Elsie and I believe it's art. Having been on the board of the Whistler House in different capacities for over 35 years, I have personally witnessed it. We constantly welcome tourists from all over the world, Russia, England, France, Scotland, among a few, who come to visit Lowell to see the birthplace of James McNeill Whistler. This maiden would be another beautiful asset to Lowell's history. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Chief Thomas Libby of the Greater Lowell Indian Cultural Association to speak to you about his Native American heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Thanks. Thank you so much. It was great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And first things first, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, for being here, and certainly appreciate you guys giving the consideration that it's been deserved. This statue, as Terry has given you some of the history, has been in the works for 20-plus years at this point. The statue was actually created 20 years ago. There's been a lot of pushing and pulling as to where it goes and where it should go and how it goes, and there's been money involved and non-money involved and so on and so forth. So, when I got the opportunity to work with Elsie to donate it to the city, I thought, what an amazing gift. What an amazing gift to, for us, and for you, and for the city, and for the people of Lowell, to have at their, at their feet, to be able to walk by and interview. One of the things that I would employ you to think of when you're deciding whether or not the city accepts this is, I walk around the city, I've lived here, I'm in Port, I wasn't, I wasn't born and raised here, but I've been here for just about 20 years. And I do love the city of Lowell at this point. But when I walk around the city of Lowell, I see plenty of opportunity and plenty of examples of the diversity in culture and the inclusion of culture in the city, from the Cambodian influx of immigration to Canada, French Canadians in Little Canada. There's an abundance of opportunity to see that, and Lowell's proud of that. Well, I just want you to think about not forgetting the people who were here first. Don't forget that the culture started and we're still here. We're not, we haven't left yet. We're not going anywhere. There's been a lot of people talking about the influx of plus and minus. Now, if you go back through history, not to give you a boring history lesson, but there has been plenty of opportunities for the native peoples to leave this land. They've left it in three different waves, starting in the 1600s and so on. They've always seemed to come back. So, they leave and go to the St. Lawrence River Valley, they come back when the, when the time is necessary to further the comeback. Our people have been here from day one, we're still here today, we still live our culture, we still breathe our culture. And I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for the city of Lowell to actually show that, that it's, it's an opportunity for you to say, we recognize that you're still here, we recognize that you still need to have a voice. And quite frankly, I think it's imperative that, and I, the one thing I also wanted to, I apologize for stopping and starting, but I had written this letter and sent it, and I don't know if anyone had had a chance to read it, but there was one error in it, and I wanted to apologize for the error. In, in the first note, where it says, you know, the Pawtucket Bridge, it was now the O'Rourke Bridge, and that is actually false. It was the O'Donnell Bridge. So, I just wanted to make sure, if you read this letter, I made an error in naming the bridge. The O'Donnell Bridge used to be called the Pawtucket Bridge. The Pawtucket School is now the McAvenue School. The, you know, the Pawtucket Field is now the Montpelot Field. We're being replaced, even if it's by accident, we're being replaced. And so, there's no representation of truth of what, who, what and who we are. The other thing that you may have, I had a conversation, actually, very recently, within the last day or so, of, you know, the validity of her regalia that she's wearing and whether or not it should be placed at the falls in representation of the Pawtucket people. I'll ensure you that it's truthful to the, to the people of the Pawtucket Falls area. The person who posed for that statue is actually the mother of my children. The regalia that she's wearing is hers, it was created by her, so it, I can tell you it's authentic, and that there's no need to try to authenticate it. But it is a true representation of the people that would have lived here prior to the European contact. So, I would, if you had questions, I would rather you ask us or one of our people than going to outside sources, which is what happens 90% of the time when something comes up about our culture. There tends to be this, this necessity to call UMass Lowell or some other, you know, academic establishment, when we're still right here and we can answer most of your questions, either through ourselves or through our elders, which is represented by Anquatasi, a gentleman in his 90s, who was one of the original founders of the Greater Lowell Indian Cultural Association. One of, there's a couple, but one of the original founders, and still here today and hoping that we can get that statue in place. Because as our elders are going, and we also have some of our younger people in the crowd today, too, in their teenage years, hoping that this statue gets placed, because for them, it is 100% a representation of how Lowell will treat their culture moving forward. So, again, I don't mean to sound negative, so please don't take it that way, but I do think it's very important that the younger generation sees that they are just as important to you guys and to the city of Lowell than gentlemen like Anquatasi. So, I thank you very much. I hope I answered some questions, and hopefully it's, it's worthy enough for you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a vote tonight to authorize the city manager to accept a gift from the Miko H. Revocable Trust of a Bronze Indian Maiden sculpture. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept a gift from Elsie Howell of the Miko H. Kaufman Revocable Trust of the Bronze Indian Maiden sculpture with the provisions that is be installed and a mutually agreed upon location along the Meramec River. I need a motion to adopt. So moved. By Counselor Conway. Seconded by Counselor Cirillo. Any discussion on this matter? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the donation, first and foremost. I think it's, it's a beautiful statue. I've been around long enough to, to know that this has been work in progress for quite some time. There've been a number of locations in the past that I can recall, at the, you know, VFW and Vinum Avenue. Do we, do, is, does Elsie or the committee have a suggestion on where it should go? Or, I know there's three or four locations identified. Who's going to agree on those locations? Because I do think it does belong at the Pawtucket Falls, and the suitable place really...
Through you to the council, you're correct, Counselor Elliott, there have been other, certain locations identified. Diane Trad from Planning and Development has been in, working with Terry and Elsie Howell in the, in terms of potential sites. Elsie, I think, wants to answer.
I believe...
Please go to the podium.
I believe there are four sites.
Please, ma'am, can you just bring it to the podium so she can be heard?
Yeah. We all want to hear you, Elsie, so...
I'm Elsie Howell, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight with all my friends. The Indian people really were excited when Miko did the warmest Indian for Tewksbury. And the elder's name was Winona. And she said, "Miko, they always make men sculptures. How about make a woman?" He said, "If I do Winona, she will have your headband on." And the Indian maiden's headband is what Winona wore at that unveiling. I believe it's up to the city. You have four locations. I wish you'd have the Indian representatives come with you when you choose the site, and as long as she faces the rising sun, she's going to be a blessing to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Well, I like, I don't know if this needs to be part of that motion, but I do think that the Native American, Greater Lowell Native American organization should be involved. And I think, I think that's a suitable way to, to end, that she faces the rising sun in God's country, so...
We knew you would say that.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Roll call?
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melanazo?
Yes.
Counselor Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Do we have one photo with the counsel? After the photo, or do you want to hold it in the photo? Why don't you hold it in the photo?
Thank you, darling.
Good job.
It was unbelievable.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to 8.1. Report of the Subcommittee, Ad hoc Election Law Subcommittee Final Report. Counselor Nun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for passing me and the Subcommittee for this great, great responsibility. We've been traveling from neighborhood to neighborhood to hear from residents. The question posed to the resident is, how do they feel about the current voting system? On the Subcommittee with me is Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Leahy. But in most of those meetings in those neighborhoods was attended by most of my colleagues and the council. And we also hear from people, I want to thank the resident, every resident that came out to, to share with us their thought. Here is the report, the summary of the Election Law Subcommittee Minute. Six Subcommittee Meeting that was held between May 23rd to August 1st, 2018, sponsored by various organizations. First one was sponsored by Coalition for Better Acre at Senior Center. The second one was sponsored by Cambodian New York Assistant Association, CMA. This third one was sponsored by Pawtucket World Citizen Council at Wayne School. The fourth one was at, was sponsored by Ballberry Neighborhood Association at Sullivan School. And the fifth one was at, sponsored by Secret Heart Neighborhood Association at Butler School. And the sixth one was at, was sponsored by Centerville Neighborhood Association at Robinson School. The first two meetings were split into small group for discussion, and then we reconvene as a single group to share their thought. Thereafter, we opened that discussion, and it was held with all the attendee. Of residents who spoke, approximately 80% indicated that they favor...
Yeah, I can see everybody. No, no, this is great, this is great. Ready? One, two, three. Let me take one off the slide.
Thank you, darling.
Good job.
It was unbelievable.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to 8.1. Report of the Subcommittee, Ad hoc Election Law Subcommittee Final Report. Counsel Nun.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank you for passing me and the Subcommittee for this great responsibility. We've been travel from neighborhood to neighborhood to hear from residents. The question posed to the resident is, how do they feel about the current voting system? On the Subcommittee with me is Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Leahy, but in most of those meetings in those neighborhoods was attended by most of my colleagues and the council. And we also hear from people. I want to thank the resident, every resident that came out to share with us their thought. Here is the report, the summary of the Election Law Subcommittee Minute. Six Subcommittee Meeting that was held between May 23rd to August 1st, 2018, sponsored by various organizations. First one was sponsored by Coalition for Better Acre at Senior Center. The second one was sponsored by Cambodian New York Assistant Association, CMA. This third one was sponsored by Pawtucket World Citizen Council at Wayne School. The fourth one was sponsored by Ballberry Neighborhood Association at Sullivan School. And the fifth one was sponsored by Secret Heart Neighborhood Association at Butler School. And the sixth one was sponsored by Centerville Neighborhood Association at Robinson School. The first two meetings were split into small group for discussion, then we reconvene as a single group to share their thought. Thereafter, we opened that discussion and it was held with all the attendee. Of residents who spoke, approximately 80% indicated that they favor district representation or some combination of district and allied representation, which approximately, so that's what the 80% want to see. So with 20% favor, keeping the current system as is, meaning the allied in place. In four of the meetings, there were, there was discussion about the need for more language and cultural assistance, as well as general education regarding voting and how the system works. At two of the meetings, the need to make government more reflective of the population, specifically the minority population, were also addressed. Different form of government was around, around the Commonwealth was discussed, and was noted that Lowell has proportional representation at one time. In one meeting, the government of Worcester was used as an example of the district and allied representation. I leave the conclusions to my fellow counselor to read at their leisure time, and there's a package there. In the package is also a Subcommittee Minute of all those six Subcommittee. So I thank you for the opportunity, and if my fellow Subcommittee members want to add to the report, please feel free to do that, Counsel Kennedy.
I want to thank the Subcommittee for their work. Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under suspension rules, what we have before us right now is the report of the Subcommittee and also a motion. And I would like to move in substitution that both matters be referred to executive session to be taken up at the conclusion of next week's meeting.
I second that.
Seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Any further discussion? All right. Regarding, I'm sorry, Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that's what the conclusion is because I thought there was going to be discussion right now, and I would have been opposed to it. If we couldn't have talked on it a month ago, I wasn't about to talk in open session about it today. So to have referred this to the executive session is all well and good with me. I won't say the things that I would have said if we were going to discuss it.
It's under litigation.
Thank you.
It's an understanding of that. Okay. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to say that thank you to Counsel Nun and the Neighborhood councils because this is a lot of work. A lot of work went into this, traveling from neighborhood to neighborhood over the spring, summer, and fall. So thank you to Counsel Nun for doing this. It gave us some good exposure. We heard a lot of good comments, and so we'll take it from here. But thank you for the work that he did and the people that came out to attend the meetings. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. By Counsel Elliot, seconded by...
We have the substitute motion, which I think takes both the report and the other edges.
So you want the report in there? Okay, we're all set. Thank you. Yes, Counsel Elliot?
So, you know, I'm glad to see the motion clearly that we're moving forward on this. I'm not sure what the difference is from the motion of October 30th where we weren't allowed to discuss this. These minutes reflect exactly what I wanted to say a month ago, but, you know, in the interest of moving forward and doing what's right, then we'll, I'll support sending this to executive session because the clock is ticking and it's, it's long overdue. We need to move forward. It's unfortunate that, you know, folks ask me now, should we be putting in this ballot? I put a motion on a couple of years ago to put this on the ballot. We're now stuck in the middle of a lawsuit, and whether the ballot would pass or not, the ballot question, you know, we've seen examples where the court will just order it. So I'll support the motion to go in executive session and move in a timely manner, and I think that's the significance of this, so it won't be costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, so.
It's in the same direction, different approach, but is everyone's going to executive session? Counsel Mercy?
No, no.
Okay.
But when we go any further to the next issue, if I could take something out of order, but let's finish this up first.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, Counsel?
Yeah, just very quickly, I'm not exactly sure what the difference was back a few weeks ago when Counsel Elliot brought this forward. We've been discussing things in executive session, and basically it's, and I'm going to support the motion, but the motion is basically what we're doing right now in executive session, as far as I, as far as I can see. So I'm not sure what the purpose is. Again, we are discussing different things and, let me finish, Mr. Mayor. We are finishing, we are discussing that. Again, I'm not sure why we have that, but I will support it at this point. Thank you.
We say the first one had more specificity, this was a general approach, but I also requested that this also goes, so it was just another format of taking this into executive session. Simple as that. Counsel Nun?
I just want to comment, I want to thanks my fellow counselor for see the urgency in this matter, so looking forward to a speedy discussion on this. Thank you.
Counsel Elliot?
I agree with Counsel Conway. We've already given this direction in executive session, so, I mean, whether it's public or not, this direction was given in the last executive session specifically. So now that it's in writing, maybe we're going to move on it more quick. I think we've already given that direction to the city manager, so.
Probably.
Either way, as long as it moves forward. Thank you.
All set. All right, next, Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are people here, and two of them are students, they're not going to speak, but I just wanted to know if I could, under suspension, if I could pull out City Council Motion 10.1, 10.1 out of order.
All right.
Thank you.
I need a second?
Seconded.
By Counsel Nun. Counsel Mercy requests city manager allow youth build students under the leadership of artists, Glenn Zegetti, to paint and restore statues, and city manager back to a more brilliant beauty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seconded by, yes.
Second, just in case.
Thank you so much. This is a motion that I understand that sometimes when there's a need in the city, people come forward, and this was at the request of Youth Build. This is a group of young students that have gone by route of construction. There are quite a few, and I have two of them right here this evening, wonderful Youth Build members under the direction of Glenn Zegetti, as well as Siobhan Sheen, who asking permission through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Madam City Manager, if they would have permission to bring back the luster and the beauty, and I want to clarify this, to the manger, not the manager, the manger. Your beauty is already surpassed. I couldn't do anything...
I could use some painting.
Oh, I couldn't add to that, but, because Counsel Leahy called me and said, "What are you saying about the manager?" I'm telling you, he's a wise guy. But we're very, very grateful to you, and it would be at no cost to the city. However, I am against soliciting funds if anybody out there in the listening audience want to write a check to Youth Build and put under the memo for the artwork for the manger, because over the years, it's falling in disrepair, where they're going to want to paint the manger itself and the beautiful statues under the leadership of this great artist. We talk about art is the handmade of human good, and you have done tremendous work. I've seen that. I want to give you my check for $100. I know that Counsel Dave Conway is going to also give you a check. I wanted to say for $1,000, but I'm not putting words in his mouth.
It's in the mail.
So thank you very much. Any bit will help. I know they have to buy the paints, the different colors and stuff, but you're going to be doing something that is second to none. I know you'll do a great job, so all we're here, by way of this motion, is to ask permission if they could do it. So they know the need is there, and every time there's a need in the city, someone comes forward, but I want you to know that this is a group of people that make that manger shine and put it up every single year. So thank you so much for all that you do. They do more than that. They have a commitment to the senior center. They serve the meals there on different times, and there's so much more that you do. I'm just so proud of everything you work with. Mill City grows, and you do many, many good things. So if we have permission, and I'd like to take a roll call with this counsel to see if we could have permission for them, a youth build, to do the artwork, to restore it to its once beauty that we would like to see again. So if I could have a roll call...
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Melonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your hard work. You got... Thank you. Thank you.
We'll make it beautiful for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. We have 9.1 petition. It's been requested to take that out of order. Need a motion to take 9.1 out of order. My Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. The petition is, Amy St. Anute, Representative Resident, request city council approve access to Shed Park and the J.G. Pine Art City Manager School from the neighborhood. I need a motion to refer this to city manager for report and recommendation. This, by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Melonazo. Madam Manager? Okay. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might say about the next group of people that are coming forward, that you don't have to be a certain age or a voter to come before the council to make a motion to have a crusade, a cause. Here are a group of children that are coming forward, and it's democracy again at its best because they're going to address the city with a very, very important message. So you don't have to be a voter, you don't have to be over 18 to come in these chambers to do what these people, these youngsters, are doing today. Oh, how cute.
I am seven years old, and I go to the Riley School.
My name is Kyla, and I am eight years old, and I go to the Pine Arts.
My name is Penelope, and I go to, and I five, and I go to the Riley.
My name is Seven, and then I go, I go to the building box. And then I four.
My name is Joshua. My name is Joshua, and I'm seven years old, and I go to the Pine.
My name is Eli, and I am eight years old, and I go to the Riley.
This is Riley, and she goes to the Pine Art.
My name is Autumn Breslin, and I'm 11 years old, and I'm in the fifth grade. My sisters and I all go to the Pine Art School and live on Berkeley Ave. Because it is so close, no bus is provided, so my parents make four trips each day, twice in the morning and twice in the afternoon. There are a lot of days that I would like to walk or ride my bike to school, but my parents don't feel safe allowing that because the dangerous crosswalk. I think if there was some way to make the class mark more visible to cars, such as adding a blinking light, it would be safer for us to travel to school or the park. Thank you for any consideration on this important issue.
First, thank you to everyone very much for your time. We've had an unbelievable response from our neighbors that we collected signatures from, from the city council's office and the principal at the school, the Pine Art School, as well as Representative Nangle's office, and we appreciate that a lot. This is Whitney. She's three months, and she also was out every day collecting signatures with them. And I think the illustration is, is that we've got a very young neighborhood. Whitney is one of five babies born just this year, just in our block alone, not even the whole neighborhood. So we'd like a safe crosswalk for the ones that are approaching the age to kind of wander a little further from home because we've got plenty more behind them, and we appreciate your time and your consideration very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Could you, so are you talking the street behind the park and Boylston Street, or what's the big...
So this is at the top of Burwick Street, where Burwick would cross Boylston. So it's kind of right between the tennis courts at Shed Park and the Pine Art School. So it's the crosswalk that we use to go to the Pine Art School and also to go to Shed Park.
Okay, thank you. I just, one more thing, if counsel...
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, this is something that, you know, we tried to address years ago, probably 10 years ago. We did put that one crosswalk in, that was Counselor Marty Laurie, but it wasn't the best location, and again, we did it because of money. So I think we should put in a couple of crosswalks that are more reasonable to the neighborhood, you know, and try to pitch it in with another project, but at the time, we did it, you know, we didn't do a complete job because we were trying to save money. So let's try to get this one right. Thank you.
I can say, you would know better than we do from police reports, but just a couple days before we were ready to let our kids go trick or treating and run around the neighborhood, me and another mom, we were with six kids, two moms, six kids, and someone got hit by a car right behind us. We were the ones that called 911. And that's when, after all of us moms, you know, years and years of, "Ah, ah, the cars", that's when we were like, "Enough, this is not safe for our families."
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just this afternoon, I went on Boylston Street, and I looked for a crosswalk, and you know, it was so faded, I went over it, I didn't even know that I had gone over it, but there is a curb cut on both sides of the street, but the crosswalk is so faded, you wouldn't even know it's there. But let me tell you, we could refresh that, but I don't know, and I never could figure out how we could still instill decency and courtesy to some people that have the luxury of being behind the wheel, that could care less about anything but to get where they're going without any concern for any children, or your loved ones or mine. So I think that if we had a designated area and we put in the same type of a light like what we have on Andover Street for the crossing, I don't know how much that costs, and I know money's tight, but we could put signage up, we can put crosswalk painting. That might help, but I don't think it's going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just through you, Natasha Vance, our traffic engineer, is here. With your permission, if she can say a few words on this.
Sure. Yeah, I agree, we do need people to be decent and stop when kids need to cross at a crosswalk.
Right, that's right.
But that's obviously not happening. So, yeah, basically what we need here is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, what they're referring to as a flashing light. So prices vary pretty wildly, but I was actually in a meeting today with an electrical contractor, and they have a product that is solar operated. It's in the like $5,000 range, which is affordable.
There you go.
And they actually perform a solar study to see if the sunlight available at the location will provide enough power and to determine whether or not we need to hardwire it. Hardwire it is obviously more expensive, but as I've said a number of times to the council, there are two things that make people at crosswalks noticeable to drivers, flashing lights and raised crosswalks. We don't want to put in raised crosswalks because of plowing, so flashing lights would be a suitable option.
There you go. I think that'd be better. Everything together, combined with that, would be helpful.
Can I add just one more thing?
Sure.
I think one of the other problems tends to be, Boylston is not a super congested street, and people tend to go a little faster. I think we might want to look at a traffic calming study on that street, which would kind of tie into your motion about making Boylston more bicycle friendly. I don't know what the details of that might look like. In the short term, a flasher would be helpful, but in the long term, we just want people driving more slowly on our city streets.
You know how they drive slower on a big street like that, with a lot of speedway to get that speed? You put like a little island there.
That's an example of traffic.
They have no choice but to slow down because I know they're going to wipe out their tires, so that's what you're doing. So we're thinking, because look, this is amazing to... to see the youngsters come together with a campaign. They're campaigning. This is great. Thanks for you for coming down here. Give yourself a round of applause. Thank you, Natasha. Thank you.
You all set, Counsel?
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Conway?
Thank you, uh, to Natasha, who you consider a man.
To Natasha.
When you were, when you were talking about the blinking lights on Andover Street, is
that, is that what you're talking about, the same type?
Yes, that is the same.
Is there anything that can be better than that? And the reason why I say it is because I spent a lot of time at Andover Street with the crossing guard lady. We pressed that button numerous times to test it. And I'll be quite frank with you, very, very few people stopped. And what's scary about the whole thing, I mean, it's a little different when an adult does it, because they're gonna, they're gonna hesitate. But you get youngsters like this, they're gonna press that button, they see it blinks, and they think, this is all right to go. And I'll tell you, car after car after car went right by. We were pointing. We were pointing at the lights, and they had no idea they could care less or whatever. And I mean, that is, it's scary. Not just in that, but even this morning, I was in back of a bus, and that, that bus sign was, oh, stop out there. I counted, seven cars went by. The bus driver is tooting the horn and, you know, waving the, nobody, nobody said, nobody's stopping. So I'm wondering, is there anything else that we can have, something different perhaps, or in addition to? Because I'm just afraid one of those kids is going to press that button, and I know I would.
And think they're safe.
And says, okay, I'm all set. It's blinking, I'm going. And these guys don't, and then, and they're not following the, the speed limit either.
Sure.
So that's what's scary about it.
Okay, so a couple of things in response. So on, on Andover Street, the speed limit is forty-five, well, it's, the design speed is forty-five miles an hour. It's a really very, very wide street, and it really gives people the impression they can go much faster.
Yeah, they do.
That is an example of a street that really needs some traffic calming as well, a road diet, as they, as you would call it. And that is something DPD has looked at in the past, long before I was there. It's obviously an expensive proposition, but something that is still on our priority list of something we'd like to do. I agree with you that pushing a button and flashing lights doesn't mean it's safe to cross. People still need to look. I really think we need to come up with some sort of public service announcement to, you know, to Counsel Mercier's point about people, I think, maybe not knowing that they're supposed to stop when people are state waiting at a crosswalk, or, I mean, regardless of whether there are lights flashing at a crosswalk, if it's a mid-block crossing and someone is waiting to cross, you're supposed to stop. That's Massachusetts general law. It's, it's not optional.
Well, it is confusing, because it has just a blinking orange light. Just one other quick question, and it might be overkill, I don't know, but some of these lights, they have cameras at all on those lights? And the reason why I say it, if those, if those drivers knew that they, they would be on camera, like you would go through a toll booth. You go through a toll booth, they're taking a picture of everything. And, and I think if word get out, I think that might be one of the few things that could, could change things.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I do know it's illegal to do red light cameras in Massachusetts, so I, I don't know if that's also true for crosswalks. But I think that would probably, I would just have to research it and let you know.
Okay.
I'm not sure the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Millenazzo.
Thank you. I just, you know, do we still have, we used to do the Safe Rates, Safe Rates School. Do they have that still?
Yes.
All right, and do we get any money for that?
So the school has to be registered to do safe, like, Safe Routes to School, and there was recent, like, I think the, the grant expired November 30th, actually, and I communicated with the schools in our city. I don't believe the Pine Art School is part of that. But this is a prime example of something that Safe Routes to School would pay for.
All right, because you go up to schools in Nashville, and I understand maybe they don't have as many schools as we do in Nashville, but you go up to Nashville, and they have all the signage, they have all crosswalks painted red, and they're all cut out for the kids to pick, get picked up with buses. And we've done it over the years. And again, like, why do we select a few schools? Why aren't we doing all our schools?
I would agree.
And I know we're all new here again, so why can't we apply for this grant, do all the schools? And I, I'm gonna fight you with the raised crosswalks, but I think raise the crosswalks and, and put them in proper locations, you know?
Yeah.
That would be my biggest.
Yeah, and actually, in response to one of Counselor Cirillo's motions, I think one of the things we need to do is do an inventory of all the signage and pavement marking at schools, and evaluate whether or not it's really sufficient to keep students safe, particularly during pickup and drop off. So I, I mean, I agree that there is more that we can do. You know, I think with, with everything, I just also would like to point out, I believe we can't really do any painting right now, because the, it's too cold.
No, I know that.
I'm, I'm just saying for, just for the general public's information, it's too cold, and the paint won't dry or adhere to the pavement. That's not to say we can't do it in the spring, certainly.
But we couldn't do the crosswalks because they're not properly placed. There's not proper cutouts, so they always said they couldn't re, they couldn't put one wherever you want, when you have to have a cutout on both.
Right, you have to have a detectable warning panel at either side, and if they're sidewalks, you have to make them ADA compliant if they're not.
And one other suggestion that's always bothered me for years, we keep the blinking lights on at the schools from, from basically nine to five, or nine to four. So it loses its effectiveness. I don't know why we can't just do two or three hours in the morning and two or three hours in the afternoon, because when the lights flash and all day long.
You mean the like twenty mile an hour one?
They flash all day long.
I don't think they're supposed to. Is that something we can look at?
Well, that's, I've been asking this for ten years, and that's what they do. They say, we just set it from eight to four, or nine to five, or, and I think that loses, you know.
Yeah, definitely if the light is blinking constantly, it's.
So we should find out if it's difficult to set the, you know, the blinking lights two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon.
Yeah, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon that I'm referring to in this instance would be called when you push the button, so it wouldn't flash the whole time.
Right, right. No, I know that, but you know, the school zone lights.
Yeah, I do, yep.
So if you could check that out.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Counsel Millenazzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin by thanking the young people that were here. Again, eleven speakers, ages three to eleven, and just to go out and gather all these signatures. So I want to thank them for that, and to also say that they will be getting results from this council. There's no way we're going to sit here and not take heed in what they're saying. They're talking about the safety of these kids, and it's just so important. So I would encourage Madam, Madam Manager to reach out to Amy St. Am, to make sure that they're involved in the discussions relative to the placement and relative to how this problem will be, will be corrected. Because if they don't hear back from us, they'll be back here in City Hall, and they have every right to do that. And I couldn't be more impressed, because again, looking at these kids, there are future. And listening to this neighborhood, how it's growing, we want to have, we want to make sure that they're safe. So, thank you.
Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. And, I mean, I, I agree that we need to do traffic calming study, but I, maybe I'm in the minority, or maybe I have Counsel Leahy with me. I, I firmly believe the only way to slow down traffic, because we have tried so many ways, with beacons, with stop signs, with so many other traffic calming measures, the only way on very busy thoroughfares are raised sidewalks. And I know, and I don't think anyone is suggesting that we, we put them up throughout the city, so it becomes, you know, a real problem for, you know, for people that drive the plows. But they are up around, I drive throughout the state, and they're, they're everywhere. They're, you know, there's one right in Chelmsford that I brought up, probably had to be, you know, seven or eight, maybe nine years ago. And it works. It's a cut-through street, it's right on Technology Drive, it's, it's, there's a slow, it's not like these bumps where, you know, they're going to be taken out. I think it's well done. It's, there's signage, there's flashing lights. And I think Boylston Street, I think in large part, we can educate people in the city, but it's people that come into the city, or cut through the city and go into the towns, and, you know, getting them to abide by it. We put up radar everywhere. You know, Madam Manager, this is a, you know, it's decades that go on, and people cut through the city for a number of reasons. So I, I think we need to take a serious look on some very, very dangerous intersection crosswalks. And, you know, there was, there was somewhat of a raised crosswalk right on Branch Street, and people have to slow down, otherwise, and I'm not suggesting we can put them on very, very busy roads, but I'd like to, us to take another look at it, and, and very selective locations.
Any further discussion? Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you. And, and again, I can assure the council and all of our young guests here this evening that we will work very hard to address the situation that you've raised. Because it's probably going to snow, we probably can't do the painting, as was mentioned. But I know the traffic engineer has looked at this and will continue to work on that. And we'll, we'll look at every, every option here, and, and including short-term and long-term addressing the situation.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, you know, we can't do the painting now, we can't raise the pavement now, the crosswalks. But what we could do is take a look at, because this is not the only location throughout the city, we could look at locations over the winter, locations where it might be appropriate to raise the, the crosswalk, and then, and then maybe do that. You know, if it's, I don't know how many locations there would be, maybe there's fifteen in the city, maybe more. But let's say it's in the vicinity of that, and those are just places where the, the plow guy just needs to, you know, take care. But certainly, you know, safety trumps the plow guy, I would think. And so it's, I would think that this winter, it might be a good idea to just take a look at that, and to see what would be involved, how much it would cost, how many intersections, and then come back in the spring with a report for the council, and then make a decision at that time, when it's more appropriate to do painting and to lift the sidewalk, and just come back, back then, and just, and then we can decide then.
Thank you.
Because if we do a crosswalk here, if we do raise a crosswalk here, we're going to have somebody else that's going to be here three weeks from now, and they're going to want another one and another one. But there are, there are several locations, and I'm sure the traffic engineer probably knows where, and the school department know where each and every one of those is. And so that just seems like prudent way to go. Thank you.
Counsel Elliot?
I just wanted to, do we have a timeframe, so the folks that came to speak here tonight don't sit and wonder, you know, that when something will take place? I mean, I think, as I just mentioned.
Well, I think, I think construction-wise and painting-wise, that would obviously have to go to the spring.
Right.
But in short-term, Natasha, any idea as far as?
I don't know how long it would take to determine the funding, and then actually procure the light and have it installed. I, I mean, I'll, I can get back to you on next council meeting.
We'll come back, we'll come back with a report.
There's some measures that we could put in place, so, you know, people walking away now can say, look, it's a long-term problem. But in the meantime.
I think the short-term answer is a rectangular flashing beacon. I think the long-term answer is traffic calming. And, and traffic calming can include speed tables and numerous other things. And to Counsel Kennedy's point, there was a, a motion, I believe, by Counsel Leahy about speed tables, and the city engineer, Christine, and I are going, actually already have on our to-do list, to identify locations where it might be suitable in terms of like traffic volume and the speed of traffic, et cetera. So, yeah.
And lastly, I, I think Santa Claus is going to be extra good to you kids this year.
And just, while we're talking about short-term, and the sun, the snow is coming, when the sidewalks in the street is plowed, it's never, there's always like a two-foot bank of snow between the crosswalk and the curb, making it impossible, I couldn't even imagine somebody in a wheelchair, but making it impossible for a stroller. So that's certainly a short-term solution, is we can clear the snow over the curb. Thank you.
Counsel Cirillo? Counsel Elliot, you all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Cirillo?
Hi, yes. I drive by a solar flashing light every day to and from work, and they are considerably large, because they have solar panels on the top of them. And, and they are very, very noticeable. And, and so I just wanted to say that, that I feel that that's a very good option. And, and thank you to all of you who came today and spoke, because your safety is first. So thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you. And as I said, so we will come back to the council with a report in looking at all options. And we also just took a look at the, you know, Safe Routes to School, and we'll work in conjunction with the school department to try and incorporate other schools. Yours isn't on it. We looked at the schools that are on the list for Lowell. So we will look at that as well. That's more of our issue for funding, but we, we want to make sure we have all the resources necessary.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the city council meeting December fourth for acceptance. I need a motion to accept and place and file.
So moved.
By Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Noon. Now we have communication from the city manager. For us is Star Avenue. Thank you for the report. Next is LED streetlights. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report. I'm very excited that the project is ninety-eight percent completion. It's awesome. So one complete, what is the anticipated estimate saving to the city per year? Anybody know?
Mr. Mayor, Catherine Moses is here, and she can perhaps be the best person to answer your question, Counselor.
Thank you so much for the motion, Counselor Noon, and thank you for the question. So once the, the project is at a hundred percent completion, we're anticipating that on an annual basis, it'll save the city about $390,792 in our utility expenses. So we think it's going to be very significant. And as shown in the report, we're actually already seeing some of those savings in our un-metered accounts. We have metered and un-metered accounts. A lot of the lights that you will see on the roadways are on the un-metered accounts. A lot of the decorative lights you see are in metered accounts. And we're already seeing savings on the metered accounts. We're hoping to see significant savings once our tariff is processed properly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Managers, and, you know, and everyone for this report, wonderful report.
Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have upkeep of school grounds. Counsel Millenazzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate my colleagues holding this over from, from last week, and I certainly appreciate the more detail that, in this, in this report. Again, I just want to repeat that I'm, I'm not looking to go down the path of privatizing anything. I think that from the standpoint of the custodians and the help that we have on the city side, they're certainly doing their best. A question I do have, though, relative to job classification, because again, looking here, and we talk about the senior custodian, custodian, I just didn't know if, either on the city side and/or the school side, if we had groundskeepers slash custodians, if we had mechanics, mechanic one, mechanic two, mechanic one plumber, mechanic one painter. Again, just to see if that's something that we, as a city, could, could take a look at if we don't currently have that. Because again, I just want to make sure that we have the people in the buildings, be it during the day or at night, that actually can do the work that needs to be done. I think that we do, but again, from the standpoint of the, of the job classification, maybe if we could get some additional information on that, and whether or not, I think the answer is yes, but whether or not the city and the school side is still meeting as regularly as they had been. Because I think that we did see some progress there when the school side and the city side were working. But again, again, at the end of the day, it's a big job to keep up these buildings, and I certainly thank the custodial staff and the city staff for the work that they, that they do do. So thank you for the report.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I know Ricky Underwood is here from the school side, and I don't know whether you can answer any of that in addition to the report, but we can, Rick, I don't know if you want to address the custodian and mechanic questions.
Yeah, we, we don't have any mechanics that work directly with the school. What I can tell you is, on many occasions, we'll reach out to DPW in the Parks Department for help when we need it, and they've always been accommodating with us. And so we do try to work outside the box and, and work collectively together.
Counsel Kennedy? Counsel Millenazzo, you all set? Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. It's good to have the report. But I think that the reason that the report was requested is because we do get from time to time complaints about the way the schools look. So it's good to have the report, but the report doesn't really address what we're going to do to make sure that the way the grounds are kept improves over what it, what it is. So maybe Mr. Underwood could address that. I mean, how do we take care of that? Do you not have enough people, or?
Well, on certain times, mostly, it's a concern of us all the time, and we do the best we can. During the summertime is our most challenging time. We're trying to deal with timed restrictions on trying to get the buildings done and the schools. We spend a lot of money on our lawn equipment. What I can tell you What I can tell you is, my number is available to everybody, my office number is available to everybody. We get calls occasionally, and we take care of them as fast as we can. I know there was a circumstance last year at the Riley School that went for some time that it was, you know, quite unsightly, but it was a rare occasion where everything kind of, it was a perfect storm, where the equipment was broken, came back, broke down again, the custodian took a vacation. But other than that, I think they do a pretty good job on the schools. But again, you can always reach out to me. I'll always make a phone call, get it done as soon as possible if there's any concerns. If you don't have my number, you know, I can get it to you, and I know you all have my office number. So, anything that we can do, give us a call.
I guess I think that you probably do a pretty good job, but the reason the matter came up is because you don't do a real good job everywhere.
Right.
And I think we would like to have it be that they do a good job everywhere, not that we are in a situation where we call you because they haven't cut the grass someplace. It should, I mean, is it a matter of just more, having more people, or is it just, is there a better way to schedule that? Or, I mean, you must have some ideas on how that could improve.
It's a little bit of both.
It should be unacceptable to everybody here that the answer is, "We do the best we can and just call me if there's a problem." What we want to get to is to a point where there is no problem, and we don't have to call you. And I would think that's what you want, too, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. So, I mean, and again, it's not acceptable for any of our schools to be unkept. We send out several emails several times a year to the custodians, trying to get them to get out there on a regular basis. What we usually suggest is try to make time on a Friday. And again, it's an ongoing, you know, I can't promise you we'll never have an issue with the schools being unkept. What I can promise you is that we'll get to it right away if I'm aware of it. We have high expectations of all our custodians in all of our schools, and we try to keep them to that. Some schools are under manned, some schools, like for instance, which, I'll take the Laurel Leaf, for example, it's a high visible school, it's right there, it's only manned by half a custodian. It doesn't have a lot of grass areas, so it doesn't have a lot of equipment there. So, from time to time, that sometimes looks a little unsightly. Again, we try to get, I try to drive by all the schools all the time. Once in a while, one gets away from us, and you know, it does get a little tough. And all I can really say is, we do the best we can. I'll continue to keep high standards for our custodians and stay on them anytime I see something or somebody sees something that comes to my attention. But we expect our custodians to do what they're paid for and to do the job all the time.
Right. And the report shows that, you know, I think the staffing, the custodial staffing at the schools is pretty lean. And so, and so I can understand that maybe they're under manned, maybe you don't have the manpower, but maybe there's a different way to do it. Maybe instead of having that many custodians, maybe you take three or four custodians off, and all they do is travel around to the 20-something schools and take care of the grounds. And that's their job, instead of being inside for all of that time. I just think, when you're driving by schools, curb appeal is important. And if you were coming into the city and you're looking to buy a house in Lowell, and you go look to see where your kids may go to school, if the place doesn't look that great, then you kind of think that the school's not that great. It's not, it's not what you should think, but I think that's the general impression that that gives. And so, I think having the schools look neat and presentable, and the grounds be neat and presentable, is very important. And again, I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. I think there's a lot of people that feel that way. So, I think what we want to get to is a point where either we come up with a new system or try and try something new, or something, so that, so that we don't have to call you when there's a problem.
Well, I can tell you, several years ago, and I'm going back maybe six or seven years ago, we had a larger staff, and what we did was we took all the security guards that turned to custodians during the summertime, and we had them specifically to go out and just be lawn keepers. But the numbers have changed now. We have less people at the high school, and those bodies are really needed to get the schools ready for the start of school. And that goes throughout all the schools. You know, many of our middle, elementary schools, some of them are adjacent to parks, some of them adjacent to woods, they had more people several years ago. Some of them are manned by one person. Most of them are manned by one person. So, it's difficult to find, in, not making excuses, but it is difficult to find the man time to go out there, especially in the summertime or in the springtime when things are growing really, really fast. Like the report says, you have times where you'll have MCAS that goes on a whole week. And that's tough to catch up on that. So, again, not making any excuses, we try to keep high standards for our schools. We want them to look the best they can. I know last year, we went out and beautified some of the schools with bark, mulch, and plants and flowers, and you know, that only lasts so long. You really have to keep that, and you are not going to get any excuses from me or trying to make it less important. I understand that it's important to keep the schools clean inside and outside. And again, we spend a lot of money on lawn care, we send out emails, we try to stay on the custodians, so no excuses. We'll do the best we can, and I'll continue to do the best I can, and we'll stay on them all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. You know, I agree with what you're saying, Counsel Kennedy. The long and short of it is, over the last 15 years, we've cut staff down. And during the summer, people are entitled to go on vacation, and you have your sick days, and we just don't have enough people. When we had a study done, when Brian Curley came on board years ago, we were understaffed then. And we've been cutting and cutting over the years, and you don't have enough people. So, you know, before Jay Lang left, at one point, we had looked at seeing how much time is involved, and maybe having an outside company coming in, like we do at the cemeteries, and cut the grass. So, maybe, you know, the school department needs to look at that, but we just don't have enough people. You have to clean the inside of the schools during the summer, and people take vacations, they're entitled to that. And, you know, we just got ourselves in a situation where we're understaffed. So, you know, I call myself, but I know you're doing the best you can, and it's tough to do it with limited staff. You only have four people at the elementary schools, and when the kids get out, they're cleaning. And they're not out cutting the grass because they're inside cleaning. That's the only time you can really clean, so...
One thing I'd like to mention, too, is some of the schools are very, very large. The Sullivan School is a massive school when it comes to grass, and just the lawn, just the bushes in front of that school, there's got to be 26 bushes in front of that building, which looked great when it was first built. There's five people working in that school when it was first built. They were easy to manage. You know, things have changed with that. Those bushes are large now, the trees are large now, the grass is growing. The Wang School, the Riley School, these are massive, these are huge schools. One of the things I did this year before school started is I went out and I tried to, well, tried to have contact with different landscapers that I met through Belvedere and through my business relationships, to see if they would be interested in coming in and somewhat adopting a school for the start of school. Of course, that's their busy season, so I didn't get any takers, but there was some interest in it. I think with a little bit more input and a little bit more time, we may be able to do something like that, much like they do on the islands that you see across the city. You know, people adopt them. So, we did look at that. I did speak with a few different landscapers in the Belvedere neighborhood that you just run into and that you know through personal contacts, and that may be something we can look at later on. But again, it's a big job. And I hate to say "call me," but seriously, if you see something, you go by a school and it looks unsightly, or you, give me a call, I'll make sure it gets taken care of right away. That's not what you want to hear, but that's...
No, I guess I think, and I understand that, you know, the Riley School, the Sullivan School, there's maybe, I don't know how many, maybe there's eight schools that have a large grass area that needs to be cut, and then other schools that don't have that. And so, if the staffing in those buildings is about the same, it's really not fair. But then, so that's what I'm suggesting, is that maybe you need to come up with a new plan to do it. You know, maybe there's a better way. I'm just saying, maybe it deserves some more thought, because it can't be, you know, it's going to be the same thing. We're going to, we could have the same conversation four or five months from now unless we do something about it. And I understand that, you know, that the staffing's down, and I know that, you know, money's tight and all of that, I get all that, but I just think that how the schools look is important.
I just want to add, I honestly, I think the schools look pretty good. I mean, there's some time to time that a school may be, you know, need some extra care, but all in all, especially this year, I thought we did a really nice job, and the staff did a really nice job for the amount of time and the heat that they dealt with this summer. I thought they did a nice job this year.
Yeah, I'm not saying that every school doesn't look good, or that there's total neglect, but there is neglect at some schools, and you see it all the time. And there's schools where you drive by that you say, like, the place just doesn't look good. And a month later, it won't look good, and a month after that, it doesn't look good either. Maybe there's times when it does look good, but this is a problem, this isn't the first time this has come up, it's not the first time you've heard about it. And I'm sure that you probably think the same thing, and you probably wish that you had, you know, a bunch more custodians so that you could do a better job. What I'm saying is, try to think about, of a plan that might improve the situation at a low cost, you know, in an economic way.
Absolutely. We'll certainly put some time into thinking outside.
Counsel Conway, then Counsel Mersi.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, through you, the, I think the Riley School seemed to really pop this situation out. Because I drove by for a number of weeks in the summertime, and I saw it, and it was really a mess. I had a friend of mine called me up, and I know he was saying a little bit like tongue in cheek, but he was, also, he passed, he had to pass this on to me, that a friend of his was looking for a house, something similar to what Counselor Kennedy was talking about curb appeal. And he came from, didn't know the city of Lowell, and was looking at a house in Belvedere, and their children would be probably going to the Riley School. They drove by, and he asked his friend whether the school was still open. I mean, that's sad.
I know it was...
That's sad, because, I mean, I look, and it's, I'm kind of a fanatic about that stuff anyway, but the fact is that I think that what Counselor Kennedy said, too, was that, you know, we've got to work in a different way. Because to come here a month from now and say, "Well, you know, we're trying to do the best we can," that doesn't really, doesn't solve the problem. A couple of quick things here, the summer, you said when people go on vacation, do we have, do we have plans for this? Because, I mean, if this was, if this was a business, and somebody was, there were a number of people going on vacation, there'd be a plan put into place, so production wouldn't go down. They'd be shifting things around or whatever they might do to make sure, I mean, if I'm buying a particular product, and all of a sudden, I'm looking for the product because I need it for my business, and you say, "Jeez, we got three people on vacation, I'm sorry. We'll check back in three weeks or four weeks." I'm going out of business. So, I think we have to look at this a little bit more businesslike to say, "We do need," which I think most people here talked about, "we need some kind of a plan that is going to fill the holes and make things more effective." And just one, the last thing about the guards at Lowell High School, and I know that they did take over responsibility of, if they want to work in the summer, custodial duties. Is that still in existence now?
Yes, it's their option to work 42 or 52-week period.
And do they stay strictly with Lowell High School?
Yeah, well, we only have three schools that have security guards, and the other two schools only have one person, and so the majority of the security guards work there.
So, do we have, do we have students, children in summer, in classes in the summer?
We have, at the high school, we have something going on all the time.
How about the middle schools and the elementary?
The one, we have several schools that have summer school, yes.
Okay, all right. Again, I think it's been brought up by Counsel Milonazzo and all of us as a bit of a frustration because we hear about it.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, we're using the same line, too. "Well, they're trying to do the best they can, and that's not working for the voter either." So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
If I could just add one thing, because I know the Riley School was particularly pointed out, that really was a perfect storm. The custodian that we have there is a very dedicated custodian, has a very large area to cut, and it usually does a very good job over there. What happened in that particular time is when a piece of equipment, especially in the summertime, goes out for repair, sometimes it takes weeks to get that back because it doesn't matter, Lowell is just one of many vendors that, let's say, Casens or one of the other equipment contractors that we deal with. So, it takes a couple of weeks to get the equipment back when they break.
So, we don't have other equipment in other places in the schools that we can borrow?
We do, but it takes, you have to move them over there, you've got to deal with DPW, have them put it on a truck and bring it over there for you, or something like that, bring it from another school.
Well, it might be the thing to do, instead of...
Well, we did do that.
Waiting three or four or five weeks to, you know...
Well, that's ultimately what we ended up doing. We brought equipment in from the other side. But what happened in that, too, is that machine got broke, it went out for repairs, it came back, and the new custodian there cut the grass when it was too tall, broke it again, he went on vacation, so there was literally a month that that didn't get done. And, you know, not acceptable, and I agree, it won't happen again, but that custodian, and I'm only pointing it out because it was mentioned of that school, he's a hard-working custodian, and 99.9% of the time, he keeps that grounds up really well, and he also does the park, and has been doing it for years.
No, I don't doubt that, but I think, again, what we've talked about is, there needs to be a plan developed.
Yeah, and we are, like I said, we're going to continue to look at and try to find something else, even if we have to maybe possibly hire somebody to come in and help from an outside source.
Thank you, Ms...
Counsel Mersi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ricky Underwood, I appreciate the fact that you said, "Call me if you have a problem." So, I looked at my phone to see if I had your number. I don't have it, so can I have your phone number?
Absolutely.
Give me a pen, it didn't work.
I might be calling you.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to accept the report.
Okay. All right, you got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the information report, Perry Street. Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there are people here to speak on this. Natasha Vance is here. We did discuss this a couple of weeks ago, and so it's on for a 60-day trial. Natasha?
Yeah, as everybody knows, the, we initially had a 60-day trial, too, which was based on a motion from Counselor Kennedy based on a citizen complaint. Looked at it one way for the first block, the thought process being that the main issue was adjacent to the condos. Subsequently, found out that that was not the only issue on Perry Street, got a lot of, I went and met with some of the citizens, I've spoken to a number of the business owners, and then did some research in terms of crashes on the street, went and looked at all the parking restrictions. It's kind of hard to see on the map that's attached, but there's a decent amount of the street that is, you can't park on it. Most of the street is multifamily homes, so, you know, there are hundreds of people living on the street and parking their cars. A lot of those homes do not have driveways, and they therefore have to park on the street. It's still a safety issue, there isn't sufficient room for two-way traffic and parking on both sides. So, my recommendation is to make the street one-way from Rogers Street to Andover Street. That's based on the fact that the next street goes, is one-way the opposite direction, the next street over is one-way the same direction, and then the next street is two-way. I think, I know the, some of the businesses on the street are not thrilled about that. My logic was that coming off of the connector or 495, you could get to Rogers Street fairly easily and then go straight up to get to the businesses. So, that's the thought process behind it. Does anyone have any questions for me, or...
Yeah, Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we're back to going one-way?
Yes.
On a 60-day trial?
Yes.
Did you look at maybe having no parking on one side, on the church side, where it's condos now, but it used to be a church, just down from Rogers Street to where the first house is?
Sherman. Okay, yeah, so that...
No, not as far as Sherman.
Okay.
To where the first house is, because those people need someplace to park. But I drove, I was up there, and all of those houses at least have a driveway, but a driveway may be a lot of times just for one car, so they still need on-street, right? So, but if there was, if there was no parking on one side of the street, then they'd at least be, you know, you'd at least be able to negotiate the turn. I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just asking if you consider that.
I did consider it. That was actually one of the, I was considering eliminating the previous 60-day trial and making that. When I, I ended up going out in the field and meeting with a number of property owners, and a number of the people there live in the homes as opposed to in the condos, and they were really adamant that they are the ones parking in front of the condos as well as the condo owners, because in some cases, they have, there are four cars per structure. And I think I see some people here who may want to address the council, I don't know, but the consensus was that there wasn't enough parking already, and if we limited parking, it would be a real hardship. There are some people who have elderly parents living with them, who can't walk far distances, and who might end up parking on Concord Street. There are a lot of commercial vehicles that end up parking on Perry Street and take up a lot of space. When I was looking at evaluating the parking, all of the businesses have a fairly substantial amount of parking. So really limiting the on-street parking kind of punishes the residents, and I don't think it's really a feasible option. But I did look at it.
Okay, thank you.
We have 6.1. You want to take that out of order? We have some speakers. A motion to take 6.1 out of order by Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Leahy. Thank you. The order is, waive the full reading. It's the order of 60-day, order of Perry Street, waive the full reading, second reading by title. Pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, the City of Lowell, Massachusetts is concerning section 266-6. There are entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. We have some speakers.
James Houston.
Hi, Jim, Jim Houston, 186 Perry Street. I live right in the middle of this, what you're talking about. I'm the only single-family house on the street. When I first moved into the neighborhood in '92, the people beside me, one car, I had one, two cars. People on the other side of me had one car, neighbors on the other side, one. As we grew older, our kids grew older, we purchased cars for our kids and stuff. At one point, I had four cars, two of them parked across the street. Now, I've got one car that has to park across the street. I have no driveway. If we do go, no parking on the street, I'm going to have to park one of my cars a couple of blocks away, probably up on High Street, maybe even Fort Hill. And I'd like to be able to look out my windows and see my vehicle in process. The street has changed over the years, and it's going to get worse, because you've got National Grid owns quite a bit of that property on Perry Street. They're cleaning up that property, and I believe they're getting ready to sell that property. So I have a funny feeling we're going to see a lot more condos on Perry Street and stuff, and it's going to make the pocket even worse. I believe in one-way. I think that's going to be the work. The small town that we had that one-way in front of my house, I noticed a big difference. It took a couple of weeks, but there was a huge difference in traffic, noise level, and safety. And that's my main concern, is safety. I'd like to see one-way, and that, the way it should go. And so, good report from Natasha.
Thank you. Next.
Elizabeth Silva.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Silva. I'm at 40 Perry Street. I'm at Silva's Mini Market. I'm at the corner of Pond in Perry. This way, we're going to come in Rogers Street and go out Andover Street. Andover Street gets very busy. If someone comes into my establishment and they park in front, some of them usually go back out onto Pond Street. Now that means they can't go back out onto Pond Street. Now they'll have to go out to Andover Street to try to get onto Concord Street. So off Perry, onto Andover, onto Concord Street. So they'll have to come into that big traffic. Is there any way to just stop maybe the one-way right before you get to Pond Street? So like that, when people come out of my establishment, they can do that left and go up Pond Street to go to Concord Street, or even to get back onto High Street? Because we have a lot of people that cross over, if they're coming over the river from Andover Street, because of the lights, we have issues with the lights, not everything coincides in the city, they'll come, they'll cut through Perry Street to Pond Street, all the way up to High Street, so they can, you know, get back onto, I don't know, Butman Ave, or, you know, going up that way. So is there any way to do that? I was expecting a survey back on November 13th, when we talked about it. I believe you had said that we were going to have a survey done, that you were going to send out to the, to the neighbors. So I was expecting a survey, maybe we could hear from the rest of the neighbors on what they thought, should it be a one-way, one-way, or the other way? Or should we have just parking on one side? I thought they were thinking about a placard for specific people like Mr. Houston.
Do you want me to address that?
I don't know. I know that I'm going to have a problem with people coming out of, I believe, well, Perry Street to get onto Pond Street and to Concord Street. I don't think it's fair that we have to make those people go all the way out to Andover Street, because it's, Andover Street's always backed up in the afternoon or early in the morning. We also have a bus that comes through Andover Street to Perry Street, greater Lowell, at 6:55 in the morning, picks up the kids right at my place, picks up the kids there, there must be maybe 10, 12 kids, picks up the kids there and goes all the way down Perry Street to Rogers Street. There's also two-small school buses that pick up maybe preschool kids, or maybe disabled kids, down the street. They also come from Andover Street down Perry Street. So now you're telling me that it's going to be one-way, the other way? I don't, I see that there's going to be a problem. I think it's going to be hard for my customers to try to get back up Andover Street, because I don't see how they're going to, you know, go all the way out to Andover, because Andover is a problem. It's always, always packed. I don't know if there's any way that we can just make it stop at Pond Street and have it the other way, two ways to alleviate the traffic from Andover Street. That could be something that maybe the council people need to look at. I don't know how many councillors actually go by Andover Street in the morning or later in the afternoon, because it's a busy road. It really is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jason Gilbo.
How you doing? Jason Gilbo. I live at 80 Rogers Street, but my condo units are on the Perry Street side. In the past meeting, I made statement that, or it was stated that in the documents, that our units were given three parking spaces per unit, which isn't true. We only have two spots, driveway and, you know, the garage. And there are multiple families in those units, there's 34 units in there, that have more than two cars. So they need an extra space to park, and we only have 17 extra spaces in the backside of our units. So a lot of the people that live in the townhomes at Concord Crossing, they do utilize Perry Street. Taking that away, or like, taking that, no parking as that one option, would just need to be off the table, because we obviously need places to park our cars as well, or the people that have more than two cars living at our units. As Jim discussed before, when they did do the one-way earlier, there was, you know, great noise reduction, safety was a good thing, because, you know, the cars just weren't going both ways. Just tonight, before coming here, I stood outside in the businesses down the road at the garages, I saw a flatbed truck and a truck on the Perry Street side, on the condo side. They were trying to start that truck, their door was open, the flatbed truck was halfway into the street, and now you have two kinds of cars trying to get somewhere. The people in the garages weren't shutting the other door to let this guy go, this guy was sitting over here for 10 to 15 minutes trying to get this way. I think it's just a cluster with some of the businesses that are there. I can see your point. But it's going to be more mind-boggling for people to try to go halfway down the street and go, okay, can I go this way, or can I not go this way? If we're going to make it a one-way, do it the full length, Rogers Street to Andover Street. I think in all of the paperwork that has come out, Concord Street is a 28-foot street. The other one, Pleasant Street's a 28-foot street, Perry Street's a 28-foot street. Those are all one-way. The Pleasant Street and Concord Street are all one-way, going the whole direction. Why shouldn't Perry Street be the same way? High Street's a double street, a two-way street, because it has a broader area to travel. So I am pro-going Rogers Street to Andover Street, and I think it's the safest route to make sure everything is safe in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? City Council, Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you. So a question for Natasha. Did you look at, like, I know we're trying to go in order of every other street, but does it make sense to enter from Andover Street and go down to Rogers because of the traffic on either end?
I mean, Rogers Street and Andover Street are both busy. My general feeling is that, I don't think we want to make a piece of the street two-way and the rest of, like, we tried that. It didn't, it didn't work very well. In fact, when I was out meeting with some of the residents, there were people driving the wrong way on that section of the street. And according to a number of the residents, that had happened a number of times. Like, I think people just either don't see the sign for that section. I understand Ms. Silva's concerns. She and I have spoken a number of times on this issue. I do feel like it's reasonable to try this for 60 days and see how it goes. I don't think that if we make the road, I don't, I drive on Andover Street frequently and during the peak, and yes, there can be a lot of traffic. I actually don't, I like the fact that it would eliminate some cut-through traffic through the neighborhood. That's one of the things we have talked about a number of times on the council floor. We don't want people getting off our main streets and cutting through neighborhoods, because that's not safe. So if someone's turning onto Perry and going up Pond to avoid some of the traffic on Andover, I think it's a benefit to this 60-day trial to avoid that. So in my opinion, I think it should be one-way the whole way. I think we should do the 60-day trial and see how it goes. I'm sure Ms. Silva will be in contact with me if it's a real issue for her business.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think my questions have already been answered. So you don't think it's a good idea to make part of it one-way, part of the street, and then, and then have the rest of it two-way? You think that's confusing?
I do think it's confusing. I think people would turn off of Andover Street, and then they would just keep going straight down Perry Street, even though it would be one-way. That's, yeah.
So, and this is a 60-day trial, so we'll be looking at this two months from now anyways?
Yeah, so, yeah, we would, you know, again, have a public hearing and, you know.
Okay. I'm good with the recommendation from the traffic engineer. I mean, we can't do nothing, because this is a problem. And it, you know, it's not a good problem. So this seems like a decent solution, and we can revisit it in two months if it's not working out, but it seems like, it seems like a good idea. Thanks.
Your honor, can I just, one quick thing. So we do the 60-day traffic, and then if it doesn't work out for the businesses at that end, could you just consider, like, what about a bump out, so you're driving down one-way and then the island's in your way?
Sure, that's, yeah. I mean, a traffic channelization island.
Keep that in the back of your mind, and, you know, we'll trust your opinion on it, and we'll see how it affects. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Conway.
Yeah, just a quick question. Natasha, when you say 60 days, and then what? Will we evaluate it again?
So typically, the way we do 60-day trials is that, usually they're not very contentious. And they go on a quarterly memo, and they go to public hearing, and no one has any comment, and then they're voted by the council, that's my understanding. So in this instance, we may want to do that separately, just to give people the opportunity to let us know how it's working.
So just through a public hearing, we don't, we don't send out any information to the residents? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I've only been here six months, so make sure, am I saying this correctly?
Through you to the solicitor, typically, there'll be a list of 60-day trials that have already gone through, and they would come to the council, and they'd be voted on for permanent approval.
Yeah.
If you want to single this out, then we could take it up in 60 days.
I think that's appropriate.
I'm just wondering, how do we measure it after the 60 days? That's what I'm trying to, I'm not quite understanding.
Well, so, all of, at this point, most-
In other words, to measure it to find out how effective it is, or ineffective?
So the, it's my understanding that at the public hearing, people could come and let us know how, yeah, that's, yeah, I don't-
No other way of doing it?
I wasn't-
Okay, all right.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Milonazo, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Okay. Back to the communication with city manager, I need a motion to accept and place and file. So moved. By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Nun. Next, we have 4.3, communication, accept resignation of Wayne J. C. Vigney, Sr. Need a motion to accept and place and file. By Counsel Kennedy. Second by Counsel Nun. Next, we have communication appointment, Joannie Burns to Lowell Housing Authority as the tenant representative, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Cirillo, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call. Any roll call for us?
Ms. Burns is here, Mr. Mayor.
We need a roll call. What moments do they vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a little overanxious, that's all.
We're ready to statue. Roll call, please.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to thank the city council for providing me with this opportunity. I currently serve as treasurer of the City View Towers Tenant Council, working for our residents. This is a great honor, and will allow me to serve as the voice of all residents within the authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a communication reappointment of Chris Corrigan to Hunger and Homeless Commission, as executive official, member of mayor's designee, I need a motion to accept and place and file.
So moved.
Counsel Cirillo, second by Counsel Elliott. And we have votes from the city manager, vote to accept donation of used van from the LRTA to the fire department, waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager, behalf of the city of Lowell, to accept a gift from the Lowell Regional Transit Authority of 211 Ford E350 cutaway van. I need a motion to adopt. By Counsel Leahy. Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Next, we have the vote, transfer $184,835 to purchase council on aging busing, waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize transfer $184,835 to fund new council on aging bus. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Next, we have the vote transfer $184,835 to purchase council on aging busing. Waives a full reading, second reading by title. Authorized transfer $184,835 to fund new council on aging bus. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
By Council Cirillo, second by Council Mercia. Any discussion? Council Mercia?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager, in Connor Baldwin. Thank you so much. On behalf of the seniors, they're out of their mind with joy. They're so, so thrilled. Thank you for providing safety because breaking down on a highway is not an easy thing. Thank you so much.
Roll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Next, we have vote transfer $50,000 to purchase new animal control vehicle. Waives a full reading, second reading by title. Authorized transfer $50,000 for new animal control vehicle. I need a motion to adopt, second by Council Conway, second by Council Elliot. Roll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
All right. We did 6.1. We need to do 7.1, resolution opposition of the FCC proposed funding cut for public access stations. Waives a full reading, second reading by title. To be recorded, opposition to the FCC proposed rule to cut 5% funding for public access television. I need a motion to adopt. So moved. Council Conway, second by Council Kennedy. Roll call.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Manager? Head of management?
Thank you. If I could just make a very quick announcement. The Lowell telecommunications did take delivery of the portable cameras today, and they were setting those up in the mayor's reception room. They're high-definition cameras. We will let you know, I believe they're operational now. They were there most of the day setting them up. So, for future reference, when you're scheduling meetings, we will let you know the schedule. But those cameras have been delivered, so, just so the council is aware.
Okay. 8.1 was taken care of. 9.1 was taken care of. 9.2 was taken care of. We're now on city council motions. 10.1 was taken care of. Next, we have 10.2. Council Cirillo requests city manager to provide an update to the city council regarding what mechanisms the city has to put in place to uphold our commitment to the emission reductions of the Paris Agreement. Need a second by Council Kennedy. Council Cirillo?
Hi, yes. Thank you. On August 8th of 2017, a unanimous vote was taken for us to join with 300 other mayors committing to the Paris climate agreement. So this is a follow-up to find out how we've moved forward in support of that. Thank you.
Next, another motion by Council Cirillo requests city manager, Air Propert de Bobin, review roadways in the city. Pardon?
Are we on the piece, the, are we on that motion?
The Paris?
Paris agreement?
We just had that. Do you want, I'm sorry, did you want to discuss something?
Well, I thought in June of 2017-
I thought in June of 2017 that President Donald Trump announced that the United States will cease all participation in the 2015 Paris Agreement. I thought we were out of that. So, I thought that the, it was my understanding that President Trump stated that the Paris Accord will undermine the US economy and put us at a permanent disadvantage, at least. That's what I thought. So, I just wanted to know, why are we supporting something that the president announced that we would not be involved in that participation anymore?
Can I just?
Do you want, are you putting this to the city manager?
Pardon me?
Do you want a response from the city manager?
No, I want a response from the maker of the motion.
Okay. Well, first, Council Kennedy at his end, then Council Cirillo.
Council Mercia is right that the president did do that, but in response to that, as the maker of the motion pointed out, 350 cities opted to stay in the Paris Agreement. And one of those cities was Lowell. And this city council last year voted to do that, and voted unanimously to do that last year.
That's correct.
And so Lowell, along with 350 other, and probably, it's probably over 400 at this point, or about 500 cities, is staying in the Paris Agreement or adhering to the Paris Agreement even though the president opted out.
The vote was-
I just wanted some clarification, that's all.
Right.
Council Cirillo?
The vote was taken on August 8th of 2017, and it was unanimous.
And what is it that you want to do?
I want-
What is this motion asking for?
This motion is asking for an update as to what the city has done since unanimously voting for to keep the Paris Climate Agreement. What we have been doing.
And what are you expecting the city to respond to that, as to what did you want them to do?
Well, they, we made a commitment to the emission reductions, and how are we doing that? How are we moving forward as a city? That's my question.
I just wanted clarification, that's all.
That's fine. Thank you.
Council Cirillo, you all set?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Good discussion. All right. Thank you. Next, we had a motion by Council Cirillo requests city manager, Air Propert de Bobin, review roadways in the city in order to, am I on the right one? Yeah. In order to take advantage of the new state laws, Chapter 90, Section 17C, allowing communities to lower speed limits on busy roads. Need a second? By Council Elliot? Council Cirillo?
Yes. What the new state laws, what the new law states is, "In the interest of public safety and without further authority, establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district in the city or town on any way that is not a state highway." So, this law was just implemented, and I know in the downtown area, we would, I would like to look at that, and I've talked to Natasha Vance about it, and I look forward to the motion response. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
Yeah, I, you know, I think the new law makes a lot of sense. We just talked about crosswalks for quite some time, and, you know, that's one of the major complaints that we all hear is speeding. I think, I think, you know, drivers and pedestrians are in more jeopardy, and it's more dangerous out there with texting and, you know, I think whatever we can do to slow people down in the neighborhoods in general makes a lot of sense, so.
Thank you. It's a good motion. Thank you. I believe Council Leahy, then Council Nun.
Yeah. I just want to say, I think this is a good motion because over the years, we've all brought this up and asked why we can't lower the speed limits on certain streets, and we've had this discussion. So now that, this is a good opportunity to review it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this new state law really gave us opportunity to relook at our speed limit. So if we need to move from 30 mile per hours to 25 or 20, I think also along same line, we need to put a sign up so that people know that they're expected to drive in downtown Lowell or wherever the city, that the speed limit is not 30, it's 20 or 25. Without it, a lot of people are not going to know about it. So we need to do that as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Next, by Council Cirillo, request environment and flood issues subcommittee meet regarding groundwater issues in the Claybrook Heights. Need a second? By Council Kennedy? Council Cirillo?
Ah, yes. This is just, I'm requesting that we have an environmental subcommittee on the flooding issues. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, by Council Leahy, requests city manager-
Mayor?
Sorry.
On that motion?
Yes. I apologize.
I sit on that subcommittee, and I'm happy to do it, but I just would like to know who we're going to meet with on, and to, at that meeting to the maker of the motion. I'm good with the motion. I just want to know exactly who is-
We will work with the chair of the subcommittee. I would imagine in the past, you know, Mark Young has been involved in these discussions. Chief Winward, I know, monitors the dam and so forth and connects-
I think you've been on the emails as well as I have, that this is relative to the Crestgate.
Yes.
So that will mean we'll have to get, try to get an L there to have a discussion about-
We will attempt to do that. As I said, I know Chief Winward communicates with them on a regular basis, so.
Okay. That was my only point, that we don't want to just meet and have a discussion saying there's flooding and what are we going to do about it.
Right.
I don't know how many meetings, it's been 10 years, and I'm happy to do it, but let's make sure we get those parties, if we can, to the table. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Next, by Council Leahy, requests city manager, strike department planning and development to study downtown this winter and come up with recommendations to attract businesses and consumers. I need a second by Council Nun. Council Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. This is just another thing. We kind of bring this up and up every year, but I kind of get tired when I'm out downtown talking to different people who stay and invest in the downtown, but they're really asking us to take a look at, you know, the garages. They come in, they have their monthly pass, and there's just no parking on, sometimes for their clients or people that they're having meetings for, you know? And they want us to take a look at everything, you know? Can we push the students up to the top floors? Can we have the down, the first floor of the parking garages, you know, reorganized so that's more in-and-out traffic, and people who are parked there all day go from the second floor up? They're looking at, and I've talked to the chief about this, you know, more of a police presence downtown. Years ago, when we had Ricky's Sandwich Shop and other various restaurants downtown, you would see, you know, two or three policemen during the day walking at all hours of the day, you know, from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. And I think the chief's taking a look at maybe putting a precinct in the downtown, but it's under discussion. But, you know, we need to beef up the presence during the whole daytime. And just to see who's downtown now, you know? Are there doctors? Are there lawyers? Who are we trying to draw in for businesses? How are we doing with trying to get the second-floor rentals and the third-floor rentals? So, let's just take a look at what we can do to improve the curb appeal, you know? What are we doing? And if we can really take a good look at this and see what direction we want to go into, how we can help people out that have invested and stayed downtown, you know, as we've seen over the years, the Lowell sun has gone to the outskirts, you know? Is the LDFC still there? And I should know this, but, you know, where is everybody moving to? Why are they moving out of the central streets and going to the outskirts? So, that's what the motion is looking for, you know? What are we really going to try to do with the downtown area? And let's try to come up with a plan that we can send to economic development, maybe, or, and see what we can do. So, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Samaras requests the city council, direct the city manager, break down causes of transportation and adult education from cash contribution provided by the city in the budget. Request for school committee. Mayor Samaras? Oh, do I have a second? Second, Council Milonazo. Mayor Samaras?
The motion speaks for itself. It is a request, vote by the Lowell City Council, school committee to the city council. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
Just to follow up somewhat relative to this, Madam Manager, at a joint subcommittee of the finance, in other words, discussion, I'm not sure if there was a motion or not, but you were going to look into the whole transportation costs issue and whether the city should, you know, look, we fund it, but we don't bid it, so, or we don't have any oversight, so I think that getting somewhat of a response or direction on, you know, how we should manage that in the future might be helpful with this motion moving forward.
Madam Manager?
We can look into that. I mean, yeah, traditionally, the school department is the one who handles the transportation, although the, but we will get a report back.
Okay. I just think it's part of the larger discussion that will take place moving forward, particularly with transportation and costs and school times, et cetera, because those costs, as we discussed at the meeting, they're going up significantly, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Samaras requests city council, instruct the city auditor to provide members of the school committee with quarterly report on the money spent in each line item of the school department budget throughout the fiscal year. Second, by Council Kennedy. Mayor Samaras?
Again, this was a request by the Lowell School Committee to the city council and the city manager. Thank you.
Council Elliot, and then Council Leahy.
I'm good with this, but doesn't, does the school business administrator or in the